De was veste gang wi metes, wora blikka bara metes. Kom me du hok de jen, kom me du hok jen. Du villa eisli likel fingers, do du wete galas. Alin inge brons kak maat voor die venste hand. Du is so big die baby, yo du alia. Du is fischik die baby, maar du kan me enfars. De fifty fifty baby, me te de balas. Efti sla rosemary baby, ingen inge dan. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Someday, baby. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. Alritita po no nanan, ba fe du me annan. Kom van me my baby, alritita po no, no, ono go nanan. Been singingana na ya villa me chakarina. No sah ou save inge zina. Ya kom me lasti ride with you. Hundra gubek lakte died for you. Du is so big die baby, yo du alia. Du is fischik die baby, maar du kan me enfars. De fifty fifty baby, me te de balas. Efti sla rosemary baby, ingen inge dan. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. Vis a me wat du fins. Du kom me wel te min city nee. Ya wet dat du fins. Kom da. De broad lives and all lives. Ya wete jammin is shawre. Kan so si ya sma good lady, ya tvi villa re. Vis a me wat du fins ayah. Like me, like a lucky man, like me. Like a lucky, lucky, lucky. Lucky, 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 lucky. Like a lucky, lucky, lucky. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby. De was fan inge danspo no roos in aja treppan on someday. Du hemi klee baby.
In 2018, the UNC members of the Tunapuna PRCO regional corporation visited the Saint Joseph's Secondary School. The school had holes in the roof and was run down. But we felt confident because we were aware that a school was being built for these children, started by our leader Kamla Passad-Be-Sessa and the People's Partnership Government. However, much to our surprise, we were about to get a reality check. In September 2015, the school was 95% complete and all that needed to be installed were the air conditioning units. However, under this PNM administration, work at the Saint Joseph's Secondary School stopped. And this, my friends, is what happened next. The school was abandoned, vandalized. Thousands of dollars worth of acoustic tiles, ceiling tiles, were just lying in the middle of a hall there for years, waiting for somebody to come and steal it. It was disgusting. I have to tell you, my friends, at this point, I was in shock. So I decided to go and do some research. When I checked, I found out that in November 2015, the PNM Minister of Education and Member of Parliament for Arima at that time, Anthony Garcia, said that a new contractor had been hired and he assured that all efforts would be made to have the building up and running in the not-too-distant future. That, my friends, was in 2015. So I don't know what Anthony Garcia thinks the not-too-distant future is. In 2019, before the parliament, Minister Garcia said that three steps had been taken to fix the school. He said they had increased security officers to round the clock. Minister Garcia said that the Ministry of Education had engaged a contractor to secure the site and in particular, the materials. The current MP for Barataria San Juan and then Senator Saddam Hussein questioned, "How could this place still be called a construction site when it was 95% complete in 2015? Somebody needs to take responsibility for this." And just in case you thought that this couldn't get any worse, well, I want you to pay attention that when we visited, even though the place was already being vandalized, the roof was still in place and that the minister had promised round-the-clock security. Well, my friends, let me show you what it looks like today. This, my friends, is now. This is what it looked like today. This is drone footage. On your right is the ceiling of the hall that we were standing in in 2018. And on the left, everything is gone. I'll take note, including the tiles that was in the middle of the hall. I mean, if a picture paints a thousand words, then this video shows millions of dollars that the PNM allowed to be stolen from a school that was 95% complete. All they needed to do was install an air-conditioning system. And now we have a new Minister of Education. What has the minister been doing since she took office? We've been dealing with COVID. She hasn't had anything to do. I don't know if she put in marble inside of the ministry, but they could have taken the time to fix this school. And it's not this school alone. This is not the only one. I mean, let's see what's going on just a few blocks away in Kurep, Kurep Presbyterian. And listen to me, eh. At least, the roof is still there. But you realize, all the windows gone, all the doors gone, the plumbing also gone, and bush growing everywhere. I mean, I don't know, eh. But by next year, around this time, all that might be gone too. Because you know what? There wasn't even one security guard on the compound. This has been sitting there since 2015 as well. Six years have passed and entire generation would have gone to school here. Kurep Presbyterian needs their school. What is going on? What is the minister doing? I know what she's not doing. She's not finishing Barataria North Secondary School. Asked MP Saddam Hussein, he has been trying to get them to do something. I mean, the most that's going on there is they're cutting the grass. What is... Why, why can't we finish these schools? Why do we think it's not important? Is it spite? I mean, we need to ask the hard questions here. We need to be honest. Is the PNM not finishing these schools simply because Kamla Passad-Be-Sessa is the person that started these schools? Is it because these are UNC schools? I want to tell you, these are not UNC schools. These are schools for the children of Trinidad and Tobago. We stand united in the belief that if you empower community, the community empowers the country.
We are the party that gave every child a secondary school education since 2001.
By building more schools in 11 years than others did in 40. We believe that no child,
rich or poor, should be left behind.
Which is why we give every four-month student a laptop to expand their minds and their dreams.
We are the party that put police cars back on the streets.
And gave the police a $1,000 bonus because we believe that we should support the persons who are protecting you.
We are the party that reduced the murder rate to its lowest in 14 years. We expanded gate, stopped the property tax, and increased maternity leave.
We are the party that invested in you and your community by investing in schools, community centers, lighted parks, 24-hour health centers, and the most extensive road repair program in decades.
We believe that education is always a solution and that no one should have to pick between sending their child to school or buying food.
We are the party that works for you. We are the first responders in every situation, working to deliver a better standard of living for you and your family.
And most importantly, we have confidence in you, the people of Trinidad and Tobago. This is not a campaign. It's a movement. A movement based on building communities and strengthening families.
Come out and join us and together we will get the nation working and moving again. Our children will once again have access to gate and technology.
We will improve healthcare.
By cutting the time it takes to see a doctor in an emergency, we will establish a senior citizen unit in every major hospital and staff the hospital with the doctors and nurses you need to create a first-class healthcare system. We will focus on creating high-paying jobs, fixing our laws to remove red tape, and ensuring that you and your family are safer. We will reduce corporate taxes to jump-start the economy, create a special investment zone along the east-west corridor, and work with entrepreneurs to build a digital economy. This is an investment in your community to move the nation forward and get TNT working again.
Whether you are from Fourth Street in Barataria to Railway Road in Dow Village, from Green Street in Tunapuna to Clark Road in Debe, from La Hocata to Maruga, from Mayaro to Scarborough. We are one people with the same dreams of a better tomorrow. And when we stand together, we win together. We are UNC and proud.
Do you know that in 2016, 66 liters of diesel cost $100? Today, under the PNM, you get 20 liters of diesel for $100. The diesel you paid $104 under the UNC now costs $327 under the PNM, which directly affects the cost of food, transport, and services. Guess who I'm voting for next time? The curriculum. Infrastructure challenges. Technology and AI. From Naperville College in San Fernando, this is the educational tongue-hold, moderated by Kamla Passad-Be-Sessa.
Thank you all for coming out, your numbers. We have resumed our public consultations with you, the people. We started last year, you remember, with a series on anti-crime tongue-hold meetings, which were very successful and of course, we will continue so to do. Based on the success of those along with the success of our pre-budget consultations, from August to September, we have decided to come back to you, the people. Everything we do is for the people of Trinidad and Tobago. So, as often as possible as we can, we will meet with you throughout the length and breadth to hear your suggestions, to hear your voices, to hear whatever you want to offer to us, your problems, your solutions, and whatever, as I say, answers you may be able to help us to craft to take Trinidad and Tobago forward. I want to thank all of you. And tonight, as you see, we have the young and the not-so-young and the in-between on the panel. I hail out to Professor Kujua as well. He's a bit under the weather. That's why he could not join us tonight, but he sends his greetings and is eager to join us on earliest possible occasion. Education, as we all know, is my special project. It has always been close to my heart because we believe education, as Shaun reminds us, is the only passport out of poverty. Education is a key to a better quality of life. And we have seen, as we've seen over the nine years, I ask you today, are you better off today than you were nine years ago?
No!
And therefore, one sector that has collapsed, that has become really in a state of decay is the education sector. We cannot go forward without the education for every child according to your needs. And tonight, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about the new technology in education, which we began. But every project we began has been stalled and stuck. So let's get back on the ground. Things have changed from then and things will continue to change as we go forward. So I welcome all of you again and thank you very much. Shaun has explained our format tonight is different from us just standing at the podium and talking down to you. Tonight, we really want to hear from you. We have the mic on the floor and we will want to hear from each of you. So thank you again, as we welcome Attaniyad Lo Bali Ram, a young lawyer. I think he's from my own constituency. Oh no, he has migrated to Princess Town. So he's a young lawyer coming out of Princess Town. Please welcome Mr. Bali Ram.
Thank you all so much, Honorable Opposition Leader. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak here today. The Honorable Dr. Rudal Munilal, thank you so much, sir, for contacting me and asking me to come out here and speak and the Honorable Mr. Bari Padarat. Thank you so much, sir. Trinidad and Tobago face a visible high youth unemployment rate with many graduates struggling to find jobs that match their skills and qualifications. We are currently witnessing the brain drain where most of our skilled nationals are seeking jobs and better opportunities elsewhere. I am a young lawyer and national scholar who graduated with all my certificates and a six-page resume. And yet, I can't find a government job. I applied for so many jobs in the past months and I'm unable to get an interview. And, and this needs to change. We have so many doctors, engineers, and, and lawyers coming out of university and cannot get employment in Trinidad. According to recent reports by the Caribbean Development Bank, sectors like IT, renewable energy, healthcare have a critical need for skilled workers. However, current curricula emphasize traditional subjects, leaving students underprepared for emerging fields. Trinidad and Tobago is heavily reliant on oil and gas and manufacturing jobs. And there is a need for skilled and unskilled labor within these sectors. But our current curriculum does not take much of this into consideration. The world, the world is increasingly driven by science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM. Yet, few of our students are pursuing these fields at the CPE level. Under the UNC government in 2010 to 2015, we saw initiatives like the NESC campuses opening throughout different locations in Trinidad and Tobago, with one opening in Debe, which I attended, and a drilling academy in St. Magdalen, providing youths with skills for manufacturing and the energy sector. But we need further investment in STEM education as digital literacy rates here are below the global average. Why are we not introducing coding, data analysis, and cybersecurity in schools to prepare our students for a digital world? Entrepreneurship is vital for the economic growth. Yet, our curriculum lacks a formal focus on this area. Trinidad and Tobago entrepreneurial activity rate has been stagnant with many young people lacking basic business knowledge. Financial literacy is also critical, yet we rarely teach budgeting, savings, or investing. Imagine a generation equipped not only with academic knowledge but with skills to build and sustain businesses. This is the future that we must work for. Crime remains a pressing societal challenge, particularly violent crimes among youth. Social responsibility and ethics education can instill values that deter young people from criminal activities. As a member of CARICAM and the international community, there is a need for students to be educated about global challenges like climate change, migration, and international corporations. Programs integrating sustainable development, social studies, and cultural awareness could help prepare these students to navigate the interconnected world. Many educators report that the curriculum is outdated and heavily examination-focused, often emphasizing rote learning over practical skills and real-world application. Modernizing the curriculum to include project-based learning and hands-on experience can better prepare students for today's society and economy. Countries like Singapore, Finland, and Canada have removed their curricula to focus on critical thinking, collaboration... Sorry, reform their curricula to focus on critical thinking, collaboration, and adaptability traits that are increasingly valuable. Trinidad and Tobago could also benefit by adopting similar models. Thank you.
Some thoughts on our first topic, which had to do the relevance of the present curriculum in meeting the challenges and demands of our country today. We hand it out to Dr. Dorat and then we'll take your questions on this first topic with respect to the curriculum and its relevance for development in Trinidad and Tobago.
Thank you, Opposition Leader, and to the distinguished head table and all the dignitaries in the audience. I can say, welcome to Napremo College, all of you. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to discuss and talk about the relevance of our current curriculum in meeting the challenges and demands of our society today. I want to start with a question. What is really missing in the education system in Trinidad and Tobago that has brought us to this point where students are not receiving the standard to which each child is entitled? Is it that we have quality ideas but poor leadership to implement those ideas? In my view, the present curriculum has to be reformed by ensuring the basics are well... ...the deficiencies in implementation. And I want to propose a special monitoring unit within the Division of School Supervision to check, to ensure that the curriculum has been implemented. And when we talk about a curriculum, we talk about excellence. And excellence is tied to delivering quality education. A nation's children are its future. And how they are educated and trained determines the shape of that future in terms of economic development and social stability. But education, quality education, is expensive. Last year's budget, 2023, 8 billion was allocated. This year, 7.5 billion. But when we look at the present school system, if school infrastructure is neglected, if staffing is inadequate and teachers have inadequate training to deliver the required quality of education, how can schools be effective? So I want to ask, my friend Shiva asked the same question. Are we developing well-rounded young people by the curriculum? I want to refer to a UNC virtual meeting from the June 25, 2020, where the leader of the opposition, Mrs. Kamla Passad-Be-Sessa, spoke about her vision to build an intelligent nation. And that vision for national education is true today as it was in 2020. Let's give her a round of applause for that. An intelligent nation. And the script says, "Without a vision, the people will perish." And when you start, whether it's a curriculum or you design educational institutions, you have to start with a vision. But we must recognize too that the challenges come from the Ministry of Education, which has evolved into a large, highly bureaucratic, complex enterprise. And one of the things, when you want to make change in these large institutions, it's difficult. But could that be, the difficulty be because of the lack of proper leadership? And I asked that question. We will talk a little bit about infrastructure. But I want to make a point about, in some schools, in this term, the majority of students were excited to go to school because schools are their home away from home. And some of the school buildings were not ready. Now, I know in Trinidad, we love holidays, yes? But not when it destroys the future of the children of our nation. There's one school in San Fernando that was for three weeks rotated, where there was school, we're going to school for two days. The upper school, we're going for three days. Right now, part of the, of the school building is being refurbished. They had to close down for that. How much of the taught curriculum is being missed by these students? And this is why it's so important for our children to have their tablets and learning devices so that they can learn from a remote site, even if the physical school is temporarily closed. These devices, actually, when you use them, make you more intelligent. If you, you do those programs like Duolingo, learn a foreign language, it actually improves your cognitive ability. So I want to say that as we look at the school curriculum, we also want to look at the exam results. Is it that these minimum standards have been met? In 2024, at the secondary school level, 45.55% of the students who sat the exams received a full certificate. That is 6,393. But in 2019, you started off with 18,844 students who passed the SE exam. What happened to that 13,451? So when you look at it, one in three students actually achieved the minimum success. And we haven't started... And we haven't started to talk about curriculum improvement and, and things like that, and how the curriculum can meet the needs of those. I worked it out, sixty-eight percent. So I want to say, and I know my time is up now, that I want us to think about it. What is missing from the curriculum of the existing education system? Thank you very much.
Dr. Dohlat, and do we take any questions now, Sean, or do we move on to topic two?
Pleasant good evening, everyone. My name is Vincent Ramuta and a proud product of Dr. Michael Dohlat. He was my former principal. Dr. Dohlat would have invested in me when I went to Iri High School. And presently, I'm a young educator in the education system and all the topics, there's flashbacks of what's presently happening. In regards to our social responsibility from our educational perspective, we are lacking, we are lacking programs, youth programs. And rightfully, as they would have said it, we are not investing enough in our teachers to deliver youth programs. We are not investing enough in the technology to make teachers work easier to assist the students. Just imagine you are in a classroom and we are still doing chalk and talk, when, when they go home, they are working their fingers faster than the computers than what the teachers are delivering in the classroom. And that is the shortfall of where our education system has lied. Now, in social, in the responsibilities of social development, right? And I want you to understand that our students, our students are lacking resilience, they are lacking leadership. Where are they going to get that from, right? When we, when we talk about academic excellence and, and shaping our students, how are we shaping them? Are we shaping them to be responsible and compassionate citizens? Is that the outcome? Is that the outcome we want for our students? It's not. Reality saying that we're not giving them that opportunity. How many responsible students or responsible citizens are going to become like myself if it wasn't for Dr. Dohlat investing in me in Iri High School? And I'll tell you, when Dr. Dohlat was the principal in Iri, he invested in all his students. Have you ever seen? Have you ever seen a principal come outside and play table tennis? Or go out in a cricket field and in the hot sun with intercall going on? And cheer his team wherever they go? That's the kind of principals we need now. When I was a student at Iri High School and the curriculum offered for instruments and cultural diversity, Dr. Dohlat invested in a particular parent group in 2005. And in 2005, under Dr. Dohlat, we won that competition because he gave us that motivation and that drive to keep going forward because of that social responsibility he had for his students. After passing with a full certificate in Iri High School, right? I, I could have gone anywhere. But if it wasn't for Dr. Dohlat in that direction and what he, what they are speaking of now is what is needed more now because our education system is failing our students day by day. We need to invest more in our youth programs. We need to get our homework centers up and running, invest in institutions that can provide assistance for our homework centers, scouting, girl guides, get them involved in our programs. Thank you very much.
Very much. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the organizers, the leader of the opposition, the Honorable Mrs. Kamala Passad Visser of Senior Council, Professor Selvin Kojo in his absence, and of course, Dr. Michael Dohlat for inviting me to share my thoughts on drama and arts education. Really, I'm here to talk about the journey. My name is Daniel Batiste. I'm a past student of Napremo College. I was actually in this, this classroom right here. And I'm here to talk about the journey that brought me here, the transformative power of the arts to change lives. So let me take you back a few years when I was a student at Napremo College. You know, a school filled with ambitious students aiming at top results, respected careers, the traditional path. And then one day I find myself standing. I'm here to tell a story because I'm in drama and I don't want to bore you all. So I'm here to tell a story. So one day I find myself standing, I think it was in this classroom, looking at those blank tanks and something was pulling me to a different direction. It was drama, it was performing arts. Now, pursuing performing arts at the CAPE level in Napremo College at that time was literally crazy. There was no one who had ever done it. It was the first time in history that three students from Napremo College decided to take the leap. And under the support of Dr. Michael Dohlat and our drama teacher, we were able to merit list first, second and third in the Caribbean. Now, thank you. I can remember the look on my parents' faces when I told them I wanted to do drama. It was, it was pure confusion, a little worry and just had dash of, you sure you know what you're doing, boy? And it wasn't easy. You know, some days it would just be the three of us in a classroom, our voices bouncing off empty walls. This wasn't a timetable, the subject. We would use our lunch times and our after-school hours and the weekends to pursue this. Late hours, working until the school wanted to kick us out. And it was in that adversity and those challenges where we found our resilience. We found our autonomy and I personally found myself. That is when I knew that drama wasn't only about acting, it was about impacting lives and reaching people through creativity and innovation. So from that moment, we knew that we wanted to build something bigger, something that would challenge nurture and inspire talents across Trinidad and Tobago. And so DNA Productions was born. That was our theater company that we began. And Dr. Michael Dohlat was so instrumental in those early stages. We were just young theater kids. We started small, looking for any space to rehearse whenever and wherever we could. Just wanting to make art because we really couldn't see ourselves doing anything different. Dr. Michael Dohlat ensured that we had a safe and protected environment in Napremo College to rehearse. Yes, thank you again. He ensured that we received ministry approval for our commercial theatrical productions, reaching so many schools in Trinidad and Tobago. And he was so instrumental in those early days. And our journey didn't stop there. We topped the Caribbean at the Regional Secondary School Drama Festival, making history for Trinidad and Tobago and in Napremo College. We had to raise over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars by ourselves. I don't know how, I was a student, but Dr. Michael Dohlat ensured that I was an Antigua performer. And it was wonderful. We came home champions, breaking history, winning over ten most outstanding awards. And then a new opportunity came up. A festival, prestigious one from Scotland, they invited us to perform. And we were so ecstatic because this was a testament to the hard work and dedication we had poured into our craft. However, we couldn't raise that level of funding and we couldn't go. And to this day, the question that remains with me is, why is it so hard to receive support for the arts when we have proven what we are capable of and what's the possibilities? So now, fast forward about seven years, six years, DNA Productions is now an established production company and artistic school. We have impacted over six thousand students across sixty-plus schools in Trinidad and Tobago. We have created job opportunities for over one hundred and fifty entrepreneurs and creatives. And only in 2024, we have enrolled almost two hundred aspiring performers. Imagine if Dr. Dohlat did not invest in me all those years ago. There is a huge possibility that six thousand plus students in our country would not have been impacted. And this is just the beginning. We aren't just teaching them drama. We're teaching them to find their voices, to build the confidence and to go out into a world with a spirit of excellence, understanding their principles, grounded human beings. Our vision for Trinidad and Tobago is a future where the arts is made accessible. High-quality artistic programs being made accessible for both primary and secondary schools. I imagine after-school classes and creative camps as safe, protected spaces, creative spaces where young people can come together and share themselves, feel empowered to define the solution and solve it. Because when we're teaching someone to be a creator, we're teaching them to create a new way of thinking, to think critically, to understand and view the world through a lens of empathy and imagination. See, expanding arts education isn't just about getting better performers and entertainers. It's about building a sustainable and dynamic workforce by time and investing in it. So I'll cut this speech really quickly and say to those of you out there, join us, just like Dr. Michael Dohlat, in creating a legacy where the arts is appreciated, where the arts is valued. Thank you.
Daniel, Daniel is talking to us. We spoke earlier, topic one was about curriculum and what we do with it. And he's telling us about the advantages of the arts in education, arts and drama. So it's a very good lesson for us and we want to thank him for sharing his story with us.
Good night to the Opposition Leader. Good night to the members of Parliament and ladies and gentlemen. I would like to start with a phrase from Nelson Mandela. Education is the most powerful tool which can be used to change your world. My name is Alexis Alvarez Beevert, most known as Alex Beevert or Mr. Beevert on social media. I do social media influencing, which consists of content basically speaking about like problems that we face in Trinidad and Tobago. I want to speak about the value of education. When I arrived to Trinidad and Tobago, I dream of continuing my studies and building a future here. I enroll, I enroll at Presentation College, pick up everybody from Presentation. But due to my status, due to my status, I faced a harsh reality, right? I couldn't continue my studies. And after a short period of being Presentation College, I was kicked out of the school. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, they called the principal, they informed him that he had a foreigner student in the school and they said he cannot continue studying there. And luckily, I had the opportunity to also go to a private school afterwards, which is something that not everybody could afford because as we know, education is very expensive on the public, on the private sector, sorry. Today, many migrant children face the same struggle. They're here eager to learn but without full access to public education. The risk being left behind, offering these children a chance is also an act of kindness. It's an investment in our society. Educated individuals are less likely to turn to crime and more likely to contribute positively to our community. By opening our school students, we give them fighting chance and in turn, build a safer, more prosperous Trinidad and Tobago. Thank you very much.
Very much. Alex has raised an issue, and it is a controversial one, which is the issue of education for migrant children. The UNC has already indicated that we have no objection to migrant children being educated in Trinidad and Tobago. We understand that our own diaspora, so many have left Trinidad and Tobago, so many persons have taken their children to other countries. And they were blessed in some of those countries to have received an education as migrant children. So we, it is with open arms that people welcome the migrant children. But before you go, um, 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 Alex, before you go, the migrants also have a duty to Trinidad and Tobago. So as we offer and say yes to the education, then the migrants also have a duty to say no to crime, no to bullying, no to all the things that are bad. So one hand doesn't clap, the two hands will have to come together for us to have a beautiful, prosperous society. All right, Sean, let's just go on to the second topic because that topic is related to the first one. And that second topic has to do with ways in which the school curriculum can be improved, how it can be tailored towards our needs, how to address the infrastructural challenges at institutions of learning, creating a conducive and efficient environment for children to learn. So we go back to Mr. Balaram, please.
Thank you. To meet the demands of technologically-driven job market, the curriculum should place more emphasis on science, technology, engineering and mathematics. This can be achieved by offering dedicated courses in coding, robotics, data science from an early age. Teaching entrepreneurship from primary school fosters a mindset of innovation and self-sufficiency. Financial literacy programs can include topics like budgeting, investing and savings, which are essential for responsible economic participation. There also needs to be a focus on critical thinking and problem-solving. We need to move away from rote memorization to project-based learning, encouraging critical thinking and creativity. Subjects like social studies and environmental science could be taught from or through community projects, debates and research assignments, helping students develop skills that address societal challenge like crime and environmental degradation. For students not inclined towards traditional academics, the curriculum should include options in vocational and technical education. Fields like plumbing, electrical work, agriculture and sustainable energy can prepare students to enter the workforce directly after school and address the country's need for skilled trade person. Schools should also be equipped with reliable internet and smart boards, particularly in rural areas where digital access is limited. Tablets and other digital tools can enhance learning, allowing students to access global resources and participate in online learning modules. In fact, between 2010 to 2015, over ninety-five thousand laptops were given to students in Trinidad and Tobago. I benefited in 2012 with my laptop I received from the laptop program the Honorable Former Prime Minister gave. Hundreds of students across Trinidad and Tobago benefited from this program. We had the opportunity to take the computer home and use it rather than going to a computer lab and having to pay. Hundreds of students across Trinidad and Tobago benefited from this program. We had the opportunity to take the computer home and use it rather than going to a computer lab and pay. I don't have the computer. I actually donated my computer to a child recycling it. Thank you so much, Mrs. Passad Visser, for investing in youths and exposing us to technology from as early as Form One. Thank you. Many schools lack adequate classrooms, libraries and recreational spaces, which hamper effective learning. The government needs to allocate funds to renovate and expand school buildings, ensuring that students learn in a safe and comfortable environment. Look at St George College, for example, where over ten million taxpayer dollars were spent and it's still flooded. This resulted in loss of valuable classroom hours for students. Even my secondary school, Debe High School, used to flood around 2008 and 2010. But thanks to the Honorable Dr. Rudal Munilal, he ensured that the drainage was fixed and- But thanks to the Honorable Dr. Rudal Munilal, he ensured that the drainage was fixed and up to this day it never flooded. Do you know that between 2010 and 2015, the Honorable Former Prime Minister had ninety-three new schools constructed? Ninety-one schools were left under construction and over four thousand five hundred repair and maintenance were carried out in schools around Trinidad and Tobago. Ladies and gentlemen, today, look at UE Campus Debe. Despite millions of dollars being spent to build it, due to politics, the project was left incomplete. UE Debe Campus would have benefited hundreds of students, including myself. We would have saved thousands of dollars on rent and more jobs would have been created in the southern area. Moreover, a hundred and twenty-five secondary schools and three hundred and thirty-seven primary schools, new and upgraded computer labs were built by the UNC during 2010 to 2015. And my time is running out, so I will have to wrap off at this point. Teachers should also receive training in modern teaching methods, including the use of technology and student-centered learning approaches. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shiva. Happy to hear some of the great things we did. Many of those projects have been put on hold. So I'm glad that you're repeating those are some of the things we can do to improve the education sector. I hand over now to Dr. Dowlat.
Thank you very much. Ways in which the school curriculum can be improved. In moving from intelligent citizens to an intelligent nation, we have to see schools as more than producing persons who can find a job. Schools must develop young people who are socially responsible, who cannot just adapt to change in the society because you know some changes are not good. But they must themselves become changers. And I want to congratulate all the young people who are here, who are standing up for change. I see past students from Napremah College, Iri High School, you know. And I want to say that we have to recognize that social responsibility is a means of achieving sustainability in a society. Key principles like accountability and transparency are really, really important if you develop young people through a well-taught curriculum. So the school curriculum must go beyond developing the intellectual and technical skills. You have to have all of these approaches where they get authentic experiences. They get involved in charity, they get involved in volunteerism. They learn to support key issues like the environment. Today, in Azerbaijan, the capital Baku, the United Nations COP twenty-nine conference has started and it will discuss all of the issues involving climate change, global warming and things like that. The discussions will impact on policies according to clean energy. This year is the hottest year in the world. Our CXC curriculum concentrates a lot on the Caribbean and goes from Guyana up to the Bahamas and Belize. Our young people must be exposed to these international fora. What's happening if this year is the hottest year so far? Farmers, food production comes into question. So is it now that when we look at our food import bill, which is about seven point three billion dollars? Is it that the school curriculum must have an emphasis on agriculture and food security? So when we think about changing the school curriculum and the focus, we must understand that our students must spend more time out of the classroom than in the classroom so they could get all of these authentic experiences. And I want to talk a little bit about fitness of purpose and fitness for purpose. I remember there's a school down in Debe and I think the motto is aim high. And this is something we have to remember. When you look in at the kinds of graduates you want from our school system, whether it's from early years go up to tertiary, you want to ensure that the institution itself would have those mission statements that would be aligned to standards, that would produce high-quality graduates. And so, yes, let's come back to the bread and butter issues. In schools, we realize that our graduates, many of you are managers here, when you interview them, they don't have the skill set to be employed. We have to teach employability skills. We have to teach them about financial literacy, critical thinking. My friend Shiva spoke about that. But you have to go beyond critical thinking because then you become an armchair expert. You have to be a problem solver. You have to go out and show that you can solve problems. Our young people get so involved in texting in these abbreviated LOL and things like that, that their communication skills are truncated, they are stunted. So when they have to discuss an idea, sometimes they don't know how to speak, what are the protocols. And one skill that is really, really important is entrepreneurial skills. There are not enough jobs for our young people. And whether they find a job with a multinational or another part of the world, they have to understand that the education has to prepare them in a way. They have to learn to be collaborative, to work in teams. They have to be able to communicate. But what is important is this, you know, sometimes we forget basic things like cooking and sewing and home repairs because when they have to go and live on their own, they have to go and Google and get everyone else to do something for them, even if it's a hammer, a trousers or a skirt. And I want to say, as we look at changing that curriculum and refocusing it, we have to understand that our graduates, besides being socially responsible, coming back and give to the society, understand that voting is an important thing to make a difference, yes? Stand up and be counted. That they must be trained to be career-ready. They must have job market relevance. They must know how to understand the variety of career paths that are available for them. So if they wanted to be a medical doctor and that part was blocked, they could take Plan B. So as I close, I want to say that even our OJT program must be one that prepares our graduates for the workforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dowlat. We're listening tonight. I'm listening because I'm here to listen to all of you. As we plan our education manifesto, we have some thoughts we should share with you. But I think we should give it up for Dr. Tim, who also helped us a lot with the Laptop Program and with the construction of all those schools when between 2010 and 2015.
Do you know that in 2016, sixty-six liters of diesel cost a hundred dollars? Today, under the PNM, you get twenty liters of diesel for one hundred dollars. The diesel you paid one hundred dollars for under the UNC now costs three hundred twenty-seven dollars under the PNM, which directly affects the cost of food, transport and services. Guess who I'm voting for next time?
The Honorable Mrs. Passard-Bissasa, distinguished members of the panel, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. I am Patricia Eversley, a retired educator. I taught briefly at the secondary level and most of my teaching career was at the primary level. Within the last ten years before my retirement, I had the fortunate experience of teaching with one Mr. Raymond Surujbali when he was the acting principal at Pleasantville Government Primary School. He's now the principal at Macaulay Government. I wish to coalesce some ideas from topics two and three, the violence and indiscipline and the curriculum. The violence and indiscipline in schools symptomatic of student frustration. There are some students who cannot manage some aspects of the curriculum. So maybe we broaden the opportunities to excel in sport, culture, physical education, dance and drama. I know former education minister, Dr. Tim Gopie Singh, attempted to address this with the CAC. So we do this by creating, expanding and strengthening network linkages and collaborative systems between the ministries of education, the Ministry of Culture, the Ministry of Sport and where and when necessary, the Ministry of National Security, my lot and my part for both males and females. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. My name is Brenzel McKenzie. I'm a former student of Presentation College, San Fernando. Good night to the panel. I would just like to touch on a few topics, well, a few points that I made throughout the entire presentation. The first thing being environmental factors. We could talk all night about the curriculum and its challenges, but we first need to address the fact that our students, specifically the ones in the forgotten schools, are firstly affected by environmental factors. If we look at Casperolo Secondary, St. Madeline Secondary, Pleasantville Secondary, San Fernando East, Old Tech, Mudsec, the list goes on. These are schools that have been in severe need of renovations. If we look at Casperolo Secondary, Casperolo Secondary still uses louvers as their form of temperature control. As stated by Dr. Dowlat, this year has been one of the hottest years to date. Imagine being a student and trying to get a education, focusing on a teacher and your only form of temperature control is a fan that circulates hot air and louvers that are older than you. In addition to that, we need to take into consideration the teachers are severely affected by these things. We need to have some sort of motivation to the teachers to teach our children in the way that they deserve. This leads me to my second point, additional subjects or trade skills to be introduced to the schools. Not everyone could be a part of the STEM programs. In addition to scientists, engineers and lawyers, our society in order to be diverse, we also need barbers, estheticians, singers, we need dancers, we need musicians, we need massage therapists, graphic designers. Me personally, I've been working in the oil and gas industry since I turned eighteen in 2021. Fast forward three years to 2024 and I'm still in this industry. The only difference is now, this year, I started my diploma in drill and rig operations with NSE. I work twelve-hour shifts, Sunday to Sunday, and I attend school Monday to Friday, eight AM to three PM, and then back to work, six to six. Not everybody my age, I'm twenty years of age right now, not everybody my age could endure this type of stress on their body. It is mentally challenging and physically challenging. And this is the struggle that I have to go through in order to help my family and get my education at the same time, at this age of twenty, and it shouldn't be so. My third point is lack of job creation and opportunities. We could offer the youths training programs and trade courses from now till the end of time. The main deterrent the youths face from these development programs is the lack of job availability upon completion of these programs and courses. If there is no incentive for the youths after investing months or years of their time to attend these programs, most times out of pocket, then they would never be interested. We need to remember, we live in a period where crime is at an all-time high. And if there's a man telling our children, if you sell so by so amount of this, I will pay this at the end of the day, our children are going to run on the fast money. My fourth point would be the implementation of technology in education. I was blessed with the opportunity to attend Presentation College. Luckily for me, I was given some of the best, if not the best, teachers and support system throughout my secondary school life. But not all students are or would be as fortunate as I was at Presentation College. This was a shining example of how possible a hybrid learning system could benefit our society. But as most things in Trinidad and Tobago under this current administration, we go two steps forward in development and ten steps backward. Yes, online learning had its challenges, but countries like Ireland, Singapore, Canada and Germany, just to name a few, have seen great benefit with these systems. We are all human. If they could do it, then so can we. It's all about iron and our defined details. In conclusion, apart from the poor leadership challenges we face, there are a number of other issues and challenges that desperately need solving in order to properly fix our education system for the betterment of the upcoming generations.
Thank you.
I'd like to conclude with this. We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we bore it from our children. Everybody have a great and safe night. Thank you for having me, panel. It was a pleasure being here.
Well done.
For those who don't know, I am also a political activist on Instagram and TikTok. My name is Gizmo and I speak on a lot of these day-to-day challenges that we as youth in politics face. So if you all want, you can look me up on TikTok or Instagram, gizmo.ca.
Thanks, Gizmo. We'll have to give you a phone so that you can join the United National Congress, apart from being a past student of Presentation College.
Good evening all and a massive thank you to the opposition leader, the Honorable Mrs. Kamla Passad-Bissasa and the Office of the Leader of the Opposition. My name is Aaron Rupnerin. I'm a Form Six student of Napremah College, where we are having this very town hall meeting tonight. And I was also a student during Dr. Dowlat's tenure as principal at this very institution. I would like to emphasize how very excited and proud I feel as a young man to see one of my personal mentors, Dr. Michael Dowlat, on this platform tonight, bringing his wealth of wisdom and his decades of experience as a highly successful educator. All around the globe, education is a necessity to the youth of our world, being the tool through which young minds are molded into productive citizens of our country. And in this complex and ever-changing educational climate, I have no doubt he will bring the much-needed change to our education system and to our young people. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. I would like to begin by thanking you, Mr. Kamla Passad-Bissasa, the next prime minister of Trinidad and Tobago, for putting in place Mr. Rudal Munilal for our which is constituency. I am Sheldon Ramdam from Barak Power Secondary. And we won last week our second in a row debate competition under his leadership, but thank you very much for that. So firstly, I would like to talk about, you all mentioned STEM, but we can talk about STEAM, where we can incorporate arts into it, where we can have students in Trinidad and Tobago have scholarships in music, dance and drama. Secondly, the e-textbooks program. I was informed by reliable source that you had a e-textbook program that was about to begin, but when the other government overtake the shuttle down. Hopefully, when you come power next year, we get it back, hopefully. Thirdly, the UE campus. I am currently in lower six. So when I come in power next, well, next year, the following year, I'll be able to go UE campus in Debe once you're back in power. Thank you, thank you. And lastly, the rehabilitation center. I don't know if Trinidad and Tobago have one, but we need rehabilitation centers to help the youths in Trinidad and Tobago to get back on the right path because one is not enough. We need to get many in Trinidad and Tobago because in 2010 to 2015, I think one of your motor was no child left behind. And I think 2025, that should be one of your motor as well. In conclusion, the United States of America may not be ready for a female president, but Trinidad and Tobago is ready to welcome our ninth female president of Trinidad and Tobago, Mrs. Kamla Passad-Bissasa. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fiat Patterson and I am a student of Presale Secondary School, a Form Two student. I have not been able to go to school for the last six weeks because of a rat infestation in the school. I have been disadvantaged because when it's time for exam, nobody wants to know that I was not able to go to school. nobody wants to know that I was not able to go to school. And I am now have to put a burden on my parents to send me to private lessons.
Presale is telling us she cannot go to school because of a rat infestation. Now, this has been wrong for a while. The Minister of Education seems to care or not care. And it's really a sad state of affairs. So students went through COVID, they couldn't go to school for two years. And now you have a rat infestation. I read about it every day. I really, my heart bleeds for the students there and in so many other schools where we mentioned the infrastructure is in a really poor state of affairs. So I will ask my MP for that area for Presale. Let us please get on to it and let us get on to it now as fast as we can. Who is the MP for Presale, please? Have you done anything about it? Okay, Santa Raisi, you may have to do more than a release. You may have to gather the parents, do file a motion in the parliament. You need to get proactive. This is really so intolerable. So let's work on it, please, MP. Thank you. Sorry, young missy, I had to come out here tonight. I hope you get back home safe. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good night, everyone. Assalamualaikum, sitaram. And good night to our future Prime Minister, Mrs. Kamla Pesad Bissasa. What I'm about to say is truth is coming from my heart and I would like to thank the Member of Parliament, Alicia Lee. And I would like to thank Member for Karen Eas, Dr. Rashad Sitaran, for helping me out the last four and a half years. I have just crossed the floor less than a month ago and I am officially now a UNC member. And I would like to tell you all, I have two huge, huge NGO group. I've never got any help from the PNM and I'm bold and brave to say it in the public domain because I'm not afraid. And come next election, come twenty twenty-five, Inshallah, I get to be one of the candidate for general election for this party. PNM will be crying. So all we have to do is just buy some pigtail bucket for them to wipe their tears. Good night, everyone, and thank you for having me here.
Good night, everyone. Good night to the Honourable Opposition Leader, Mrs. Kamla Pesad Bissasa. Good night to members of the panel. My name is Vijaya Angadeen from the Williamsville area. And I just want to touch a personal note that would have happened back in twenty sixteen when I graduated from the University of the West Indies. Twenty fifteen was the general election. Twenty fifteen was the general election. Twenty sixteen, I graduated. And it took me more than one year to get a job. And I luckily, I got one. So when, when twenty sixteen reached and I got that job, I was, well, twenty seventeen and I got that job, I was like, yes, I'm lucky, because I know I had friends who I graduated with and they were still unemployed even for about two to three years later. And I could say for sure that the track record has continued. I want to touch on the OJT program. Recently, in the Standard Finance Committee meeting, the Minister of Labor said that they are going to hire more OJT trainees in the next fiscal year. But recently, in the season of graduation, there is an article on TNT's Brilliant Dream that is on The Guardian. It is said that data from the Ministry of Labor indicate that the numbers, the number of OJT's assigned to public institution has progressively declined from twenty nineteen to present. Right? And it goes on to say that there was a dip in eight to eight hundred and nineteen trainees in public institutions for the following period, October twenty twenty-two to September twenty twenty-three. For the latest cycle of October twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, six hundred and ninety-four trainees were assigned to public institutions. So while they promising in this fiscal year, their track record shows that there has only been a decrease, a decrease and more decrease. And our youths today are unemployed. I know people who graduated this time and they say, Vijay, you know, I say, well, you try OJT. I got through with the OJT after some years. But how many of these people are going to get through to that OJT program, an OJT job today, tomorrow? They will have to wait. And while the government is slashing funding, slashing the amount of trainees, we have persons out here who graduated with their degrees, post-grad, undergrad, and they're looking to leave the country rather than stay in the country and help give back. And this is what, we have to make sure and put back a government that cares for our youths, that cares from all the way from ECC Education, straight up to university. And not only in terms of education, but that could provide jobs for our students, for those who coming out of the education system, provide them to make an income, especially in the field that they study in. And that is one of the things that, you know, we really have to stand up for, for our youths in our country, right? Make sure that we need to keep them on the right path and a life away from crime. Thank you very much.
Good night to the Honourable Leader of the Opposition, Mr. Chairman, other men on chairs. A special thank you, Dr. Dowlat. This seems to be like an endorsement for you. Thank you for inviting me. This is the first time I've come to one of these. As you fully well aware, I'm in retirement, but I felt it necessary since it was on education that I should come and I was asked by really to say something. If I had to give advice, there is three things that is necessary in any school.
Name, please, your name.
Wazir Hussain. I'm a citizen of Trinidad and Tobago and I belong to San Fernando West. So it's a very important vote. So basically, what I would, the advice I will give, because I've reached the stage, my, when different people ask me things, I tell them, I'm a happy camper. I know I live in a strong Fort Worth country. I get water once every two weeks. I could go in the hospital, I wait about three, three days, I will get a bed. I'm satisfied, you know? I, I mean, in all honesty, because at the end of the day, no matter what you do, the bottom line, in my opinion, is nobody listens. So it is good that I'm seeing this where you all are actually listening. So if I were to say in schools, three things that you need in any school, whether primary or secondary, and my experience is, as you know, Michael, I was a PTA president in San Fernando T M L. And then after that, I started to advise principals in different schools who would listen to help better it. Because at the end of the day, not being a teacher or a principal, my personal problem with the education system is the Ministry of Education demands so much of things from principals and teachers, but they don't give them the tools to work with. So the solution to that really, based on what has been happening for over twenty, thirty years, is to shut down the Ministry of Education from that level. And we literally have to start over from scratch. The level of bureaucracy and the amount of money raised and wasted with respect to eight billion budget, it is not going to the schools. We had once we could talk about all these schools that have fallen apart. Why? Allegedly, there's money to fix it. Let's go to our next thing. There was a national consultation about education and the rumor was, we want to make all schools government schools. And you know, when I heard that, I got up one morning and I say, you know, I must be well stupid. Let me see if I understand this. The nominational schools are performing better. Government schools are not performing, so let make all the nominational school government school. Why don't we make all government schools the nominational schools? You know? So that is why I have a problem with what is happening. And that is why I said the strongest thing. You have all these nice ideas you want to do, unless you clean the slate and start from a fresh with the ministry at the highest level. And to get back to the first point, three things any school needs, and I have done it all over San Fernando. Good classrooms, good staff room and good toilets. You get that in any school, the students will perform. I have proven it in T M L, I have proven it in Boys R C, I have proven it in St. Gabriel's, in Asher Girls and to an extent in Napremah College, but that's a different story. That's basically what all schools need. Now, with respect to bullying, my wife and I had this disagreement with it because I like to think radical. Because at the end of the day, I like to think I'm results-oriented. You all nobody see that program? You're welcome. I was the President of the Pharmacy Board when that was coming into play. And I used to leave San Fernando to go Port of Spain to develop that program when they brought down the foreign consultants. And at the end of the day, I told the minister, sir, you serious about this? Or you want, oh, this is mama guy. Because I couldn't come from San Fernando to Port of Spain to waste money. And I wasn't even paid for it. He said, no, he's serious about helping the people. Anybody know who that minister was? Colin Embert. Call him, sorry. Melissa Embert. Nobody expected that plan to be successful. No pharmacist wanted to be in that plan. I had to beg them. I told them, do it for the country. Right? At the end of the day, ask any one of them to come out of the plan. And as far as I'm concerned, we are still on a pilot project twenty-something years later because it was to develop more. At the end of the day, what I'm saying is what this country is lacking, and it's been lacking for nine years, if we want to get political, is good leadership to make harsh decisions in the best interest of the country. So a simple thing like bullying, you know, we have all these articles, everything about bullying, bullying, bullying. We have a class, let's take one school. Let's take Napremah College, for example, eight hundred students. How many students are being bullied or bullying? Might be ten, let's say ten, doing the bullying and all that. What do you do? You chastise everybody and you put up, you implement programs so that. What if we were to remove those ten people from the school and let the eight hundred and something or whatever do their work? Children want to come to school to learn. Those who are doing distractions, why can't we create one special school and suddenly we'll call it the bullying school? You send all the bullies there. And then what you need is to hire, because you cannot hire, we have to be practical. You cannot hire speech therapists, all these psychologists and all of that for three hundred schools. It is too expensive, but you could do it for one, two or three schools. So if you send everybody there, two things will happen. One, people who want to give trouble will realize, oh, shucks, if I don't behave myself, I go in there. It will slow down. And two, you're sending the children there, you're not suspending them. You're sending them there with the right technical people to get what needs to be done there. That being said, thank you.
Thank you so much, Wazir Hussain.
Before, before you speak, ma'am, ma'am, thank you very much. On the issue of the nominational schools, you are right, they do better. And it is my proposal, we have not stretched it out fully, but the new UNC government will work very strongly with all religious organizations to bring religion into the schools, all the nominational schools. And for others that we have who are failing and trailing, we will want to partner more with religious organizations. So I take that point and some of your other points, we'll, we'll take it on the advisement. We shall consider the other points. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. My name is Teza Samson-Ratan. I'm a private NGO with the Shagoners, Londonville area. Good night to the Honourable Mrs. Kamla Bissasa. Thank you so much for tonight. This is my first time attending to one of these meetings here. I had the esteemed pleasure to observe what is being done by the councillor Brenda John of the Londonville North and Enterprise South area. I must say that Enterprise is an area where everyone stigmatizes it for crime and Brenda has done a lot in the, in sense of anti-bullying. She has the anti-bullying work that's supposed to be done. We have a lot of people on board. She has a lot of people on board with her for that. I also observe the community members, how grateful they are in the, the security system that was in place in the African grounds in Enterprise that most people might be aware of. Also, in the terms of education, right? We need to have a better educational system for our youths because they are the future. We must admit that we, I, I will say I owe, my time done passed already, but the children are the future. The children are the future and we need to focus on the children. And the, the system of anti-bullying, what is taking place right now in our country is really, really, really getting out of hand. And as the current government, they are doing nothing about it. And it's about time we reclaim what is rightfully, rightfully ours. Reclaim and put it, put us, put them, put these people and show, as they say in the Bible, give unto Caesar what, what belongs to Caesar. And I believe the U N T party, we deserve to be there to make a difference for our country. We need to stand up and we stand up as a community, as one. It can break one sick like that, but as a community and everybody, put all of us together, they can't break us. I didn't come prepared for a speech tonight, but after hearing the wonderful speech by each and every one of the honourable guests tonight, you all moved me. And I had to stand up here tonight and say, thank you, thank you.
I won't take more than thirty seconds. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jairaj Singh. And we have heard from many of the students who have benefited from the computers. I just want to share very quickly the perspective from a parent's, a parent's perspective. In twenty ten, September of twenty ten, my son was one of the first students to receive a computer. One of the first students. Actually, can you kindly stand? Just, just stand up, he's a little bit shy. Please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, today, just a few days, Mrs. Bissasa, a few days before Diwali, my son graduated from the University of the West Indies as a very young and good-looking doctor. Today, Mrs. Bissasa, I want to stand on behalf, here on behalf of all of the parents, those parents who, like myself, could not have found that eighteen hundred dollars. I couldn't. I want to thank you. I want to thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, I also want to ask you to put your hands together for Dr. Gopie Singh, who was the then Minister of Education. Give him a nice round of applause. Ma'am, today I owe you. I owe you for the successes of my son. On behalf of my wife and I, I want to thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, can we put our hands together and show some love? God bless you. God bless you and your family. And let me thank Dr. Munilal for inviting me. Please give Dr. Munilal a nice round of applause. Thank you very much, sir. And last, but not least, my MP, Michelle Benjamin. Make some noise for Michelle. Thank you very much. Twenty-five seconds.
Good evening. Special good evening to the Leader of the Opposition and next Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. When I, I think I went a little too high. When I was told that this topic was the topic for the town hall, I had to come.
So is it possible that you could give your, your name?
I, I, sorry, I apologize. I am Philip Edward Alexander and it is a pleasure to be here. Actually, thank you for that. Because there was a second reason that I had to come. And that was to reiterate my support for Kamla Pesad Bissasa. And I needed to come and do that in person so that the rest of Trinidad and Tobago would know that the only way that we could get this despicable and failed government out of office is to unite behind the next Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. Now, in the past couple of months, I've been focusing on issues and less personalities. And one of the issues that I found myself involved in is education. And I raised an issue about cancelling homework. You see, I am still a parent. And like many parents, and a lot of parents don't have it as good as me. Many parents don't have the time to be doing the homework with these children. And it is the parents doing the homework. Satish rams around his hair with a camera phone filming me. But last week, they were filming him in his son's school with a project that Satish take three weeks to do. Now, his son win, but it's the parents doing the projects. We have three eight-hour shifts. I will keep it short. We have three eight-hour shifts in a day. One eight hours to sleep. One eight hours is for school or for work. The last eight-hour shift is to get to school, get to work, do all the other things you have to do. And for children to be children. The most important thing, especially for the primary school years, is for children to develop their imaginations and their interpersonal skills, how to be good, functional people. They're not getting the time to do that. It's time we let our children be children again. The top sc, the top countries in the world for education don't have homework at the primary school level. And I would like to strongly suggest that that be us, I'd like to strongly suggest. And I would like to also acknowledge that it was you as Education Minister, when you built the last school that made it possible for no child to ever fail common entrance again. I remember that. I remember that. And I thought, why didn't we transition then to 10-year schools? Why don't we abolish SEA? We don't need it anymore. The psychiatrist and the psychologist will tell you. And I'm sure you're aware that the SEA and preparation for SEA damages children and is damaging families and we need to abolish the SEA. If you made all the schools, we follow the Finland model, and I'm sure you're aware of the Finland model, where the slow learners and the fast learners carry each other along and they, their standard of education is higher than anybody else in the world. So I'd like to suggest, there are things now, and I heard all, every single contributor here. This lady in the yellow shirt who was just here before me, amazing contribution. And, and the other person who was talking about all of the, bringing the trades in, we learnt in the COVID lockdown, the trades are important. So that you need to identify who are academic and who are trade, so we get everybody on board. But I would like to use this opportunity to thank you, to further endorse you, and to ask you to make it a platform that we abolish homework in Trinidad and Tobago so that our children could be children again. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Wahid Majid. I'm the President of the San Fernando Jama Masjid, which is the masjid right lower down here. I'm a proud member of the San Fernando West constituency. We'll call this the battleground constituency, right? And we're so grateful to have someone of the stature of Dr. Michael Dowlat here at the head table and trying to articulate something about education, which now we have to change. We have, we've been known before as the industrial capital, but now we know for sure that San Fernando is the educational capital of Trinidad and Tobago. And if you're looking for a model to follow, this is the place you have to look for that model, San Fernando. We're talking about that space by Todd Street. That is an important area for the schooling population. And to try to change demographics in that area is really trying to upset San Fernando. But I want to say that over the years, the government itself, whichever part, I make no apologies for this, have, they have not done anything with the, the actual infrastructure in San Fernando for schooling. That has been developed by the same, the nominational boards outside of the Presentation College and the Napa Rima College and the TML Primary and the Asha Primary and the St. Gabriel's and the Boys School, RC School. Those are the schools that have carried us in San Fernando. And we have, are now seeing that the government secondary schools are the ones that are suffering. Why? Because there's decay. No one, it's not that we need new schools. We just need to act on the schools that we have by doing exactly what these two gentlemen have proposed, changing the curriculum, making it more 20, 21st century, you know, in our time, that we could see something that is changing. So I'm so grateful for this opportunity and I'm glad that they've used San Fernando. I am also a presentation boy, so it's not that we have anything against Napa Rima. We're glad to be here in Napa Rima College, but we know we have a very good relationship between Napa Rima College and Presentation College. Everyone who, who is part of it would know that. So yes, you can learn quite a lot, quite a lot from San Fernando. And we are grateful for the opportunity to showcase the education system. And we assure with our Prime Minister in the caliber of the Honorable Kamla Posad Bissasa, we will exceed, we will succeed in getting this thing done for the education system. Good evening and thank you very much.
I am Roma Achatsini. I have been an educator for over 30 years and a principal for the past eight and at present, I'm an attorney at law. I would like to say that what is very, very lacking, in my opinion, in the education system, is family support services. We always say that when the students are in school, the teachers are virtually the parents. I think the teachers always feel that they are blamed when it's the parents' responsibility at the first level to train the young ones. I am of the view that both parents and teachers need a lot of assistance in terms of education. And in terms, when I say education, there are so many parents who try with their children and do not know how to handle them, how to deal with them. I have had parents saying to me, miss, I rarely see he's going astray and I don't know what to do. You know, parents beg for help, they reach out for help, but there are not the services to support parents, to guide them, to advise them, to educate them as to how to bring up their teenagers in these very turbulent times. And when, and I believe that even at the secondary and, and primary level, teachers' courses should include some aspect of the parenting of the children that they are charged with during the school hours. Because many, many teachers would feel it is not really their responsibility to guide the students that are extremely delinquent. Some teachers might give up in despair, but I think the children are falling through. And how can we say we are educating for a better society if we are breeding criminals in the school? Virtually, that's what's happening. When we listen to the news now, we hear all about the taxing in Shagonas and in all parts of Trinidad, taxing business people. And it is appalling that we have come to almost accept it as a normalized process where business people have to pay to be protected. But it begins in the primary schools. Children are taxed because they want to go to the washrooms. Little boys and little girls, tax on the little boys and girls. I know this for a fact, right? And the taxing starts from age six, seven, eight, nine. If we do not curb it, both at the, in the homes and in the schools, we are turning them into criminals when they reach a much older age. So I believe that the education system is failing. And my measure is not simply all the other measures that went before. I agree that they are measures, but I am looking at the fallout of society, of the delinquent kids we are raising. I have met many of them in court matters. And the problems in the home are amazing. There are so many problems. I mean, whether it be incest, I have had children sit and talk to me about the incest at home. And I have had a kid murdered in my own school during a weekend in the cemetery. And I have waited and I have, I have attempted to counsel the staff. And then I had called the children in my office, let them sit, talk to them how they felt, what they loved about the boy. And he was such a popular child, very poor, but very popular. And it was weeks after, almost a month and a half after, that the ministry finally sent a counselor to counsel the children in the school. There are never counselors, right? As a principal, I often had that problem. You call different ministries for counselors and there are not enough of them. So I'm saying social workers, welfare officers, counselors, and, and more assistance at both the parenting level and in the home and in the secondary school are needed to help save our children and our lives. Thank you.
Thank you all very much to our presenters all here and to all of you who participated from the floor. It's been a great evening, a lot of food for thought, a lot of issues and ideas for the way forward. I had intended to give you some of my ideas, but I think we've had a great evening. So we'll incorporate those ideas from those who spoke today and of course, marry them with the ideas that we have. So you will not hear any long boring speech from me right now. Just to tell you all, I love you all very much. We look forward to your support as we go forward to implement the suggestions and the thoughts that have come forward to us. And I was very pleased about more than one thing. I was very pleased to see a number of young persons who came forward. I was very pleased to see the number of experienced persons who also gave from their experience. And I was also very pleased to see how you all stayed on point. You stayed, we said tonight was an education town hall, education forum, and the persons who came forward did not drift away. They did not revier, as they say, and go into other areas. You really stayed on the topics on the education. You deserve a word of commendation. It is like we set an essay, we set a test paper, and based on the presenters here who gave us brilliant presentations, you all stayed on the points, do you agree? So I didn't hear, but you know, I talk about the road, which we have to talk about one day. I didn't hear somebody telling me about the box rain. They didn't tell me about the flooding. They didn't tell me about, what is it, infrastructure collapse everywhere. They didn't tell me about when you go to the hospital, you can't get medications. They didn't tell me you can't get surgery. They didn't tell me I have to wait four years to get surgery, cataract surgery, whatever. There's every sector, there are issues. But this crowd here tonight, you guys, you stayed on point. Congratulate yourselves because we will, we will, we will deal with those issues as we go down the track on the road to victory in the next election. God bless you all, get home safe, and thank you very much. Our next meeting is on Thursday. A pavement report, where is it, please? Kakandian Piero Junction in the Kuver North constituency. Starts at what time? Is the constituency of Shagonas where's time? Time? 7:00 PM Thursday, a different format. Tonight was informative and to get solutions. On Thursday, it is a pavement report where it blows, blows, and blows. God bless you and I thank you very much.
Do you know that in 2016, 66 liters of diesel cost $100? Today, under the PNM, you get 20 liters of diesel for $100. The diesel you paid $100 for under the UNC now costs $327 under the PNM, which directly affects the cost of food, transport, and services. Guess who I'm voting for next time?